Good evening. It is Wednesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and welcome to the Town of Carmel Town Board meeting. This is a double meeting, a voting meeting followed by a work session. If everybody would please rise and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody please remain standing in memory of all the fallen officers for Police Week. Thank you. So we begin this. We begin this meeting with our police department. The Carmel Police Department has awards for our officers to present from two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. So Chief Hoffman is here to lead us in this. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. Thank you for having us here this evening, and thank you as the board for your continued support of the Carmel Police Department throughout the years, and especially this week as Police Week and today, May fifteenth, as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, which was established in nineteen sixty-two by President John F. Kennedy to pay respect to the men and women of law enforcement that gave their lives in the line of duty protecting their communities and our country. This evening, we're here to celebrate the Carmel Police Department and the men and women of the Police Department who have done great work over the past year. As the board knows, the Carmel Police Department was officially established in January of nineteen forty-two by a resolution of the Carmel Town Board. We are responsible for protecting the forty square miles of this town and the thirty-four thousand residents of the Town of Carmel, including the hamlets of Maipack, Maipack Falls, and Carmel. We do that with an authorized strength of thirty-six officers. Currently, we're at thirty-five. We're looking to hire another one. Five civilian dispatchers and two civilian administrative staff who actually run the show downstairs, as I'm sure you know, Mr. Supervisor. The makeup of our sworn officer contingent includes myself as the chief of police. Lieutenant Michael Bodo is our patrol division commander. Lieutenant Neil Brown is our administrative division commander. Detective Sergeant Brian Ford is our detective division supervisor. Administrative Sergeant Aaron Makeham. Six patrol sergeants, three detectives, twenty-two police officers, and one police K-9. Can't forget Petro. Can never forget Petro. These officers, in addition to their duties as police officers, investigators, and supervisors, also participate in a number of special units, including our marine unit, one of our largest units, which is primarily tasked with patrolling Lake Maipack during the boating season, and our dive team, which is attached to the marine unit, which we run collaboratively with the Maipack Falls Volunteer Fire Department, and we thank them for their assistance in that endeavor, providing another service to our community. Additionally, we have our K-9 unit, as I mentioned, K-9 Petro and Officer De Santola. We have a seasonal bike unit, a drone unit. We have our community relations team, our peer support team, which supports our officers' mental health and wellness, and also our joint police emergency response team, which we operate with the Town of Kent Police Department, providing a SWAT team and crisis negotiators to both communities. In the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-three, the Carmel Police Department responded to thirty-three thousand five hundred and six calls for service. That's quite a number. In those calls for service, we made three hundred and eighty-one arrests off of eight hundred and twelve cases that we investigated. We issued one thousand five hundred and twenty-five traffic summonses. We responded to two thousand two hundred and thirty-seven medical emergencies, including a hundred and eighty-six emotionally disturbed persons calls, mental health calls. We responded to three hundred and five domestic incidents and also investigated seven hundred and sixty-six traffic accidents. Now, with these over thirty-three thousand calls for service, it's obvious that this is quite a little busy town that we have here, and there's no such thing as Mayberry anymore. But the men and women of the Carmel Police Department do this job so well that last year, we were acknowledged as the eighth safest town in the United States, the second in New York State. So thank those guys. Now, I'd like to acknowledge some of the specific duties that our officers have performed in the past year, and I'll start with two thousand and twenty-three awards, beginning with a burglary on Dyckman Road. On October eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, at seven thirty a.m., the Carmel Police were notified of a past commercial burglary at Dyckman Road and Route fifty-two in the Carmel Hamlet. Detective Daniel Shea led an investigation into this burglary, assisted by Detective Devon Sanborn and Detective Brian Smith. Detective Shea identified a suspect in this incident, previously convicted of a previously convicted murderer, wanted for numerous other burglaries throughout the downstate region. Conducting an extensive two-week investigation across two states, Carmel detectives alongside multiple other law enforcement agencies safely took this suspect into custody during a rolling surveillance across the Throggsneck Bridge in the Bronx. Receiving the award for meritorious police duty, Detective Daniel Shea, and receiving the letters of commendation, Detective Devon Sanborn and Detective Brian Smith, I'll just ask everyone to... We have a number of these, so I just ask, I'd like to ask everyone just to hold you with applause or applause. We'll get to that. Otherwise, we'll be here all night. Sure, everybody wants to get... Thank you, sir. Moving on to an excellent police duty and life-saving award. On the beginning on the evening of July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Carmel Police were notified of a missing vulnerable adult who was last known to be on foot walking in the area of Myrtle Avenue. The missing adult had medical conditions requiring medication, and weather conditions varied greatly. Over the span of four days, Lieutenant Michael Bodo and Detective Sergeant Brian Ford coordinated a complex investigation involving a large number of professional and volunteer personnel and multiple assets across a number of agencies in the first responder community. Relentlessly pursuing all leads, including deploying the Carmel Police Patrol and Detectives, the Carmel Police K-9 Unit and Drone Unit, Carmel Police Officers were able to lead assisting K-9 Units to a wooded area where the missing man was located alive. The man was airlifted to Westchester Medical Center, where he was treated and released. Receiving the excellent police duty and life-saving award, Lieutenant Michael Bodo as the incident commander, Detective Sergeant Brian Ford as the investigative supervisor, Detective Daniel Shea, Detective Brian Smith, Police Officer Vincent De Santola of the K-9 Unit, K-9 Petro, and Police Officer Vincenzo Rocco of the Drone Unit. Moving on to a life-saving award and a letter of commendation. On May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at four thirty-seven p.m., Carmel Police responded to a call of an unresponsive eight-year-old female at a gymnastics studio on Route six in Maipack. Police Officer Thomas Egan was first on scene and took over care from bystanders. Upon the child losing her pulse, Officer Egan and Sergeant Laura Witten initiated life-saving procedures, including CPR, AED, and administering oxygen through a bag-valve mask. Officer Egan and Sergeant Witten coordinated with EMS and Maipack Volunteer Fire Department personnel, as well as Police Officer Michelle Jaeger and Police Officer Brian Detz, and regained a pulse for the child prior to transporting the child with a multi-jurisdictional escort to Maria Ferrari Children's Hospital, where she survived. Receiving the life-saving award, Sergeant Laura Witten and Police Officer Thomas Egan, and receiving the letter of commendation, Police Officer Michelle Jaeger and Police Officer Brian Detz. Moving on to a life-saving award and a letter of commendation. On October first, two thousand and twenty-three, at six forty-three p.m., Carmel Police responded to the Wayne Wright Road in the Carmel Hamlet on a report of a missing eighty-four-year-old male with dementia. Sergeant Kevin Anderson led a multi-agency investigation across the towns of Carmel and Kent in search of the missing male with the aid of Police Officer James Ziccone, Police Officer Vincent De Santola and K-9 Petro, Detective Brian Smith, coordinating police, fire, and EMS assets over the span of two days culminated in Sergeant Aaron Makeham and Police Officer Vincent Sereo locating the man, who had fallen in a densely wooded area near a retaining wall obscuring his whereabouts from the search teams. The male was transported by EMS to the hospital and released to his family. Receiving the life-saving award, Sergeant Kevin Anderson, Sergeant Aaron Makeham, and Police Officer Vincent Sereo. Receiving letters of commendation, Police Officer James Ziccone, Detective Brian Smith, Police Officer Vincent De Santola, and K-9 Petro. Moving on to a life-saving award. On August fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, at one twenty p.m., Carmel Police were dispatched to a residence on Route six in the Carmel Hamlet on a call of a pregnant female with a severe laceration to her wrist from a cooking accident. Police Officer Brian Cilery, arriving on scene, observed the female bleeding profusely and beginning to lose consciousness. Officer Cilery immediately applied a tourniquet to the woman's arm, stopping the bleeding, and then rendering aid while awaiting the arrival of the ambulance. The female regained consciousness and was transported to Westchester County Medical Center by EMS. Receiving the life-saving award, Police Officer Brian Cilery. On another life-saving award, on August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, at five oh two p.m., Carmel Police were notified of a thirteen-year-old male actively seizing on Baldwin Lane in Maipack. Upon arrival, Detective Brian Smith observed the male unresponsive and in cardiac arrest, and immediately began emergency care, performing CPR, utilizing an AED, and administering oxygen through a bag-valve mask. Detective Smith further coordinated the efforts of CPD officers on the scene and assisted arriving EMS personnel, CPD officers along with multiple agencies, and then coordinated a multi-jurisdictional escort of the ambulance to Maria Ferrari Children's Hospital, where the child recovered and was released. Receiving the life-saving award, Detective Brian Smith, Police Officer Matthew Valente, Police Officer Arthur Kuzklowski, who is now a member of the Westchester County Police Department, Police Officer Anthony Bamback, Detective Daniel Shea, and Detective Sergeant Brian Ford. Now on to a letter of commendation for an animal escape and recovery, as I'm sure most have seen on the news, the goat assignment, if you will. On September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, at five sixteen p.m., Carmel Police responded to a residence on Long Pond Road on a report of fifty escaped goats from a pendant area adjacent to residence. Police Officer Vincent De Santola, utilizing K-9 Petro and coordinating with Sergeants Aaron Makeham, Kevin Anderson, and Detective Brian Smith, were able to corral the entire herd of goats on Crayscout Way and back to the property, avoiding a hazardous condition for the animals and vehicle traffic on Long Pond Road. The homeowners commended the officers involved for their professionalism, politeness, sense of humor, and their ability to lessen the anxiety of the homeowners and the goats, and ultimately leading to a successful resolution to a potentially dangerous situation. Receiving letters of commendation are Police Officer Vincent De Santola, K-9 Petro, good boy, Sergeant Aaron Makeham, Sergeant Kevin Anderson, and Detective Brian Smith. Only a few left, folks. Now, on to the two thousand and twenty-four awards. We begin with a life-saving award for a severe laceration to the wrist. On April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, at ten fifteen a.m., Carmel Police were dispatched to a residence off of Route six N in Maipack Falls on a call of a suicidal male who had slit his wrist. Police Officer Travis Lash arrived on scene to find the male bleeding severely from the self-inflicted injury to his wrist. Officer Lash immediately applied a tourniquet to the man's arm, stopping the bleeding, then bandaged the wound, and located and secured a knife at the scene. Officer Lash then escorted the male to the hospital with EMS, where the male received medical and psychiatric care and survived. Receiving the life-saving award, Police Officer Travis Lash. On another life-saving award, on February fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at ten twenty p.m., Carmel Police were dispatched to a residence on Glenida Boulevard in the Carmel Hamlet on a request for a welfare check of an elderly female resident. Police Officers Vincent De Santola and Vincenzo Rocco canvassed the residence, finding the doors locked, lights off, and the residence vehicle not at the location. Undeterred, Officers De Santola and Rocco were able to gain entry by climbing onto the roof of the residence and locating an unlocked window. Officers then found the female resident fallen on the floor of a bedroom wedged between the bed and the wall. They immediately began administering first aid and requested EMS. The female was transported to the hospital and was subsequently determined that the female had been stuck in that position for three days and would likely have not survived except for the call from her friend requesting the welfare check and the efforts of Officers De Santola and Rocco. Receiving the life-saving award, Police Officer Vincent De Santola and Police Officer Vincenzo Rocco. Now, this next one says "letter of commendation," but it's actually an excellent police duty award. We had a little typo on that. So, "For the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-three, Police Officer Vincent De Santola and Police Officer Michelle Jaeger led the department in traffic summonses and overall arrests. Even as these officers have taken on extra duties as a K-9 handler and a drug recognition expert, respectively, they continue to lead the department in our enforcement efforts and are consistently an example to other officers to follow in keeping our community safe." Receiving the award for excellent police duty are Police Officer Vincent De Santola and Police Officer Michelle Jaeger. And finally, a letter of commendation in regards to our ERT team. "In late two thousand and twenty-three, the multi-agency police emergency response team, the tactical unit, for nearly twenty years providing SWAT operators and hostage negotiators throughout Putnam County, lost a member agency and was forced to adjust to providing services solely to the towns of Carmel and Kent. Taking this challenge head-on, Lieutenant Neil Brown, Detective Sergeant Brian Ford, and Sergeant Kevin Anderson led the transition to a dual-agency team, and they have set the course for significant improvements in team leadership, personnel, training, equipment, operations, and coordination with other regional tactical teams." Receiving the letter of commendation is Lieutenant Neil Brown, Detective Sergeant Brian Ford, our ERT commander, and Detective, excuse me, Sergeant Kevin Anderson, our ERT team leader. That concludes our awards, and I thank all of our officers for their hard work.
You have them come up.
And I'd ask all the officers that received awards to come on up and receive their certificates.
Officers, come up and let everybody see you.
You have to come up.
Officers that receive their awards, come on up.
Come on, three of us vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. Thank our residents for their support and the hard work of the men and women of the Police Department. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chief.
Great job, Chief. Thank you. So calling this meeting to order, I ask our town clerk, Alice Daly, to please do a roll call attendance.
Councilman Kearns?
Present.
Councilwoman McDonough? Councilwoman Lombardi?
Present.
Supervisor Kazari?
Here. Can somebody make a motion to accept the town board minutes from April seventeenth and May first?
Second.
McDonough, seconded by Kearns, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. The first resolution is accepting a donation and authorizing installation of a memorial bench at Airport Park. Councilman Kearns, could you read that for us?
"Resolve the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes the installation and placement of a memorial bench at the Airport Park facility, all in accordance with the memorandum and attachments submitted by Director of Recreation and Parks, Nina Calmeyer, dated April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, and be it further resolved that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes and consents the dedication of these improvements in the memory of Christopher Provezano, and be it further resolved that upon presentation of insurance certificates for all vendors and contractors proposed to perform improvements in connection with this authorization in form acceptable to Town Council, theforesaid work may be commenced. I offer this resolution as read."
Second.
Seconded by both. We could just... Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. The second resolution is... That's okay. We can applaud for Chris. Yeah. The second resolution is making appointment to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee. Councilman Lombardi, could you read that?
Sure. "Resolve the town board of Town of Carmel hereby appoints Donna Proff to the Town of Carmel Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee for a term commencing immediately and expiring December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six. I offer this resolution as read."
Second.
Can we get a roll call on that?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Congratulations, Donna. The third resolution is... The third resolution is making probationary appointment to Senior Recreation Leader, Recreation and Parks Department. "Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby appoints Zachary Frank to the position and title of Senior Recreation Leader in the Town of Carmel Recreation and Parks Department, said appointment being at CSEA Group Eight Step One, salary level on a probationary basis commencing May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, subject to the provisions of civil service law and the civil service rules and regulations. I offer this as read."
Second.
Seconded by everybody. Roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lombardi?
Yes.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Congratulations, Zach. The next resolution is authorizing a vehicle purchase, Town of Carmel Highway Department. Councilwoman McDonough, could you read that?
Yes. "Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel, upon the recommendation and request of the Town of Carmel Superintendent of Highways, Michael Stern, hereby authorizes the purchase of two thousand and sixteen Ford Transit one fifty van from Upstate Auto Sales, Housick Falls, New York, at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. I offer this resolution as read."
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. The fifth resolution is authorizing release of a bond. Councilman Kearns, could you read that?
"Whereas application has been made by Day Road LLC for the total release of a site plan bond posted in accordance with the land subdivision and/or zoning regulations for tax map number fifty-five dot six dash one dash forty-one with respect to a site plan approval issued for theforesaid property, and whereas said applicant has been reviewed by the town engineer and release of the bond has been recommended and approved by the town engineer and the Town of Carmel planning board. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes the release of the site plan bond posted, Western Certi Company Bond, number seven one nine nine eight nine one six, in the amount of seventy-three thousand. I offer this resolution as read."
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Lombardi. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Number six is acknowledging performance of emergency repairs Carmel Water and Sewer Districts. Councilwoman Lombardi, could you read that?
"Resolve the town board of Town of Carmel acting as commissioners of the various water and sewer districts of the Town of Carmel hereby acknowledges the emergency performance of water and/or sewer distribution system and treatment facilities and repairs, all as fully detailed in the memorandum of town engineer Richard J. Franzetti P.E. to the town board dated April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four, as attached here to and may part hereof. I offer this resolution as read."
Second.
Seconded by both. Roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Next up is a resolution authorizing payment for trailer unit installation Town of Carmel Water Districts. "Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel acting as commissioners of the various Carmel Water Districts and upon the recommendation of town engineer Richard J. Franzetti hereby authorizes payment to BNJ Plumbing, Mahopac, New York, for trailer unit installation required for the PF O A, PF A S pilot studies being conducted at the Town of Carmel Water District's facilities in a total amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, and in accordance with the invoice dated April fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four, and be it further resolved that the costs of said installation are to be apportioned equally among the Town of Carmel Water Districts, and be it further resolved that town comptroller Mary Ann Maxwell is hereby authorized to make any and all necessary budget revisions to affect the repairs authorized herein. I offer this as read."
Second.
Seconded by Kearns. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Number eight is a resolution extension of contract for cemetery maintenance services R. two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero four. Councilwoman McDonough, could you read that?
Yes. "Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel, upon the recommendation of town engineer Richard J. Franzetti P.E., authorizes the awards, the extension of the existing contract for the Town of Carmel Cemetery Maintenance Services with Kiko's Landscaping, Carmel, New York, for two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six at annual costs of fifteen thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars per year, and be further resolved that upon presentation of insurance and bonds in form acceptable to town attorney, town supervisor Michael S. Kazari is hereby authorized to sign any documentation necessary to effectuate said contract extension renewal on the terms authorized herein on behalf of the Town of Carmel. I offer this resolution as read."
Anybody? Second.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Next up is a resolution extension of contract for Lake Seacore Park District Maintenance Services R. two thousand and twenty-one zero zero two. Councilman Kearns, could you read that?
"Resolve the town board of the Town of Carmel acting as commissioners of the Lake Seacore Park District and upon the recommendation of town engineer Richard J. Franzetti P.E., authorizes the extension of the existing contract for Lake Seacore Park District Maintenance Services with Bella Vista Landscaping, Carmel, New York, for two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six at annual costs of four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and four thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars respectfully, and be it further resolved that upon presentation of insurance and bonds in form acceptable to town attorney, town supervisor, Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to sign any documentation necessary to effectuate said contract extension renewal on the terms authorized herein on behalf of the Town of Carmel. I offer this resolution as read."
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. The tenth resolution is authorize an extension of the contract for Teakettle Lake Park District Maintenance Services R. two thousand and twenty-one zero zero three. Councilman Lombardi, could you read that?
Sure. "Resolve the town board of Town of Carmel acting as commissioners of the Lake Teakettle Park District and upon the recommendation of town engineer Richard J. Franzetti P.E., authorize the extension of the existing contract for Lake Teakettle Park District Maintenance Services with Kiko Landscaping, Carmel, New York, for two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six at an annual cost of seven thousand five hundred dollars, and be it further resolved that upon presentation of insurance and bonds in form acceptable to town attorney, town supervisor Michael Kazari is hereby authorized to sign any documentation necessary to effectuate..." any documentation necessary to effectuate said contract extension renewal on the terms authorized herein on behalf of the Town of Carmel. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Next up is a resolution appointing legal counsel and authorizing commencement of litigation. Resolve that the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes Joseph A. Charbonneau Esquire III, Starwood Road, Brewster, New York, as counsel for the Town of Carmel for the purposes of commencement of any and all matters and proceedings in Supreme Court and/or Town of Carmel Justice Court with respect to the Town of Carmel Town Code or other New York State law violations at a premises known and designated as Town of Carmel Tax Map Number 75.19, Block 1, Lot 5, and be it further resolved that said legal services are hereby approved at a rate of $225 per hour. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Seconded by McDonough. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Number 12 is a resolution accepting proposal for legal services. Councilwoman McDonough, could you read that?
Yes. Resolve the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby accepts the proposal of Leekly Platt &amp; Schmidt LLC, White Plains, New York, as special counsel for the Town of Carmel in accordance with the proposal dated May 14, 2024, and be further resolved that said legal services are hereby approved at a rate of $375 per hour. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Seconded by Lombardi.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Number 13 is resolution authorizing scheduling of a public hearing. Councilman Kearns, could you read that?
Resolve the town board of the Town of Carmel hereby authorizes the scheduling of a public hearing at Town Hall 60 McAlpin Avenue, Mahopac, New York, 10541, on Wednesday, June 19, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter that evening as possible on a proposed local law amending Chapter 10156 of the Code of the Town of Carmel entitled "Zoning", and be it further resolved that the town clerk, Alice Daly, is hereby authorized and instructed to publish and post the necessary notices in the official newspapers of the town and on the Town Bulletin Board regarding this public hearing. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Seconded by both. Oh...
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. So the local law will be published and posted. This would be 156, which is zoning. That would be the moratorium that we talked about last week. So that'll be up on our website as soon as... As soon as we can, so anyone can read the moratorium and so you know. Next up is a resolution authorizing appointment of Town of Carmel Town Assessor. Councilman Lombardi?
Resolve the town board of Town of Carmel pursuant to New York Town Law Section 24, hereby appoints Brian Scott McMillan as Town Assessor for a term commencing May 16, 2024, and concluding, excuse me, September 30, 2025, at an annual salary of $120,000. Be it further resolved that town comptroller, Mary Ann Maxwell, is hereby authorized to make any and all necessary budget revisions to affect the aforesaid appointment authorized herein. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Yes.
Supervisor Kazari?
Yes. Congratulations, Scott. So can we get a motion to adjourn the voting meeting?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Alice.
Thanks, Alice.
Thank you, Alice. Thank you.
So... A motion to open the work session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So first up on the work session is a memo dated May 7 from Richard J. Franzetti, town engineer, in reference to Carmel Sewer District Number Four, drive assembly for rotating biological contractor number two. Infomarc, the operators of Carmel Sewer District Number Four, has advised the engineering department that the drive assembly for the rotating biological contractor, number two, has failed. Currently, influent flow is being directed through RBC Number One and RBC Number Three, which increases the loading rate at each of these units. The RBC units are compliance-related, and failure of either RBC One or RBC Two unit will cause the plant to be out of compliance with the state pollution discharge elimination systems, a speedies permit for ammonia and possibly biochemical oxygen demand. This is considered an emergency, and Infomarc has been authorized to move forward with this repair. Infomarc requests and received the attached quote to repair this unit in the amount of $59,604. There are sufficient funds in Carmel Sewer District Number Four operating budget. However, there will need to be a budget transfer request to fund it out of the equipment line. So Infomarc is our operator that runs that particular sewer plant up in Seacore. Yeah.
Do we have a meeting next week?
Greg could possibly answer a question if you have one.
I'm saying we don't have a meeting next week.
No, next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, next meeting. The second thing again from our engineer, Richard J. Franzetti, fishing dock in Lake Cassie. Lake Cassie Park District wishes to install a fishing dock at their clubhouse. They have quotes of $11,268, $16,38, and $18,500. Based on the review of the quotes and pricing, we, as engineering, recommend the project be awarded to FWM Docks at a cost of $11,268. Per the attached, there are sufficient funds in the Lake Cassie Park District operating fund to make this purchase. A budget transfer will be needed, and Rich requests respectfully that we do this at the next meeting, and attached is all the quotes.
That just paid out of the Lake Cassie Park District funds, not to the entire town.
Right, they're a taxing district. And then the third item from Richard J. Franzetti, town engineer, is generator maintenance, and that's RFP 2024-002. Proposals were solicited from 10 contractors for the reference maintenance contract. In addition, the proposals were posted on the New York State BidNet and the town's website. The complete list is on the attached vendor list. The proposal identified that the contract would be effective for three years from January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027, with additional unilateral option on the part of the town to extend the term for two additional one-year periods. There are six proposals attached with a summary. Yeah, and so MagPro, which is who we use now, was the lowest with $25,775 per year, with a total over the five years of $128,875. MagPro has sufficiently performed its service for the past five years already with the town, and the engineering department is very... They are very satisfied with their responsiveness, professionalism. So based on that, the engineer is asking that we go with them with this contract. So these are the the generators that are in all those sewer and water plants. Very important that if the power goes out, that we don't...
At the pump stations.
And the pump, the pump stations, right, and the pump stations. So it's very important that we keep those pump stations and the water flowing. So that is the last one. So announcements-wise, this Saturday with the rain date of Sunday, from 12 to 4, Carmel Street Fair is going on. It's from 12 to 4, like I said. It's up in Carmel on Route 52, Glade Avenue. It's from Fair Street to Vink Drive. Airport Park, they started work on the playground. So in the next couple of weeks, they're going to be closing that area because they're pouring this special foamy rubber protective mat underneath. So when they close that, if you're at Airport Park, please don't let your kids or anybody touch that because they said it's... It can't, it don't have people writing their names. It's going to destroy the integrity of that rubber mat. So it's going to be closed just for two days at some point very soon when they pour that surface. They got to wait for dry days, in which we haven't seemed to have. And just, I don't know if you call that a shout-out, but just my thanks to the director of EMS up at Putnam County Bureau of Emergency Services, Robert Cuomo. Our highway department and our recreation departments both went up to be trained in AED, CPR, and Narcan because we have ADDs or AEDs in the town buildings. We're also going to be having those at all the parks, so it's important that people are trained, and it also comes in handy, you know, in their home life, you know, with their own kids or grandkids. That's all I have.
No announcements for me tonight. So this coming Saturday, along with the Carmel Spring Fair, along, I'm hosting, along with Mary Ann Chaluzin from Back to Blue, a food drive and diaper drive to benefit the St. John's Food Pantry. I've done this every year for a number of years, including during the... During COVID. They had, there is a need for, to refill some of their pantries, especially with diapers. So we'll be at Red Mills, right near the gas station, from 9:00 until 12:00, collecting, and then thereafter, we will transport everything to St. John's. All right, so if you can spare, it goes back to our community. All right? Can they, do they have to be packaged, the diapers, or? They have to be packaged. Yes.
Okay, so microphone is on. Five minutes, please, just residents and business owners. Direct your comments to the board, not the audience. Please, and no outbursts like, you know, have sometimes happened. So just come up, state your name, where you live, please, and you have the floor.
Eddie Parch in Baldwin Place Road. Good evening. We would just like to thank the town board for taking the time to listen to our concerns, but we also want to remind you that actions speak louder than words. All this listening means nothing if you do not do everything in your power to represent we the people. Like I said last week, we the people will fight to the end for our families, our neighbors, our town, and most of all, our children. They can keep taking down our signs, but they will not take away our fighting spirit. Like any good parent, I see many of them out here and plenty more watching at home. We will do anything for our children. A parent's main job is to make sure that our children are safe. The future is bright for them. We don't want to leave them in a world of total disarray when our time here is done. The battery storage facility will leave them in that world of disarray. We want to teach them to stand up for themselves and the ones they love. If we quit this fight and just give up, what does that show them? We want them to see that there are still good people in this world who want to do what is right. I also ask people to stop calling it a battery farm. The true definition of a farm is a plot of land devoted to raising of animals, especially domestic livestock. But then again, some people in this fight want to use the word farm as a verb, which means letting out of revenues or taxes for a fixed sum to one authorized to collect and retain them. We the people, we say no to both the noun and verb form of this word. Thank you.
Thank you. You beat him to it.
Sorry. So, good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for your unanimous vote tonight. Okay. I don't, I never know how to work this thing.
Just tell it to down. There you go.
Got it. Good? Okay. I did say thank you for the unanimous vote tonight.
Yes, thank you.
So Lauren Roslin, Center Road. I wanted to start by saying I approached my comments tonight with complete and total exhaustion, but also with a cautious sense of hope. I contemplated what to write. I spent hours drafting and redrafting my thoughts inside my head. I reworked them to make them as clear as possible. I asked myself what I actually wanted the town board to know. So to that point, I wanted to make the board aware of some of what has gone on behind the scenes of our fight and acknowledge the pure dedication and unwavering effort of Carmel and stormers residents. I wanted to tell you about the hours of research we have done, how we have combed through thousands of pages of documents that we have foiled, but feel like we have not even scratched the surface. We have reached out to other towns that have been successful in fights similar to ours to get their advice. We have reached out to local, state, and federal representatives with letters, emails, and messages by phone and social media. We have made signs that we have placed and replaced all over town. We have circulated petitions and went door-to-door to make our neighbors aware of what was proposed, what is proposed. We've made new friends, hosting them to watch a company try and convince us that their dangerous project is okay. We have taken time away from our families and children, often leaving them to fend for themselves while calling on friends and neighbors to do pickup and drop-offs, all while feeling guilty and inadequate. That's how much this means to us. We are willing to sacrifice everything to be successful. This is why a moratorium is imperative to the process. I'd like to briefly outline only a few of the many reasons why this can be the only option. First, technology is moving forward at a pace that no town code can keep up with. This is why New York State allows for moratoria. It allows for towns to try and keep up with big business that has agendas that pad their pockets instead of protect your citizens. It's to, and I quote, "prevent rush to development, prevent inefficient and ill-conceived growth, prevent hasty decisions that would disadvantage landowners and the public." We need to pause, reflect, and digest all the ramifications of current and future projects. Other municipalities in our area have enacted responsible code changes and have outlined specific criteria to address newly proposed projects. They have outlined size, zoning, and environmental regulations. We have a pending comprehensive plan that outlines changes to our code. The New York State Moratorium Guidelines specifically outline that it should be used to address a new kind of use in a comprehensive plan and land use laws to prevent immediate construction that might be inconsistent with the provisions of a future plan. A moratorium would give you time to implement responsible, adequate, and safe code changes. It will afford the sufficient time to adopt regulations and to assure the safety of the community and to afford sufficient protection to surrounding communities. A moratorium would give us a chance to form a task force so that elected officials and residents can be part of the process, so that we can work together. This is happening in towns close to us, like South Hold, Long Island. All of these points will be outlined in great detail at the public hearing. I wanted to close tonight with a little story. This past weekend, we celebrated Mother's Day. My daughter's... Sorry. My daughter's amazing fourth-grade teacher asked her students to write words that described their moms. When I read her words, I was shocked. Of course, it included words I expected, but she also wrote four words I did not expect: responsible, brave, courageous, and fearless. These are words that I'm not sure would have been included two or three months ago. If nothing else, I hope I have taught her to be brave and fearless when it comes to standing up for what she believes in, to have the courage to go out of her comfort zone, to protect her family, loved ones, neighbors, and friends with everything she has, to be persistent, open, and honest, but also informed, responsible, and respectful. Most importantly, I hope she has learned to never give up hope that good will prevail. We know this is only the beginning and that countless hours of work lie ahead at the state and local level. We the people are ready. We hope you are too.
Tony Polo, Carmel, New York, Erdhoffer Drive.
Dear members of the Carmel Board, members of the Planning Board, members of the Carmel Environmental and Conservation Board, members of the Board of Ethics and Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear Board members, one everyday problem of the battery storage facility for 24-millimeter road MAIPAC, East Point Energy's design calls for ventilation for the lithium-ion batteries. When asked on the planning board's application whether the plant would emit pollution in the air during open-air operations, the company checked no. However, the design of the plant disproves this statement because it provides ventilation for the batteries when they produce off-gassing to prevent the batteries from overheating. This ventilation necessary to mitigate the chance of the fire, but in doing so, allows the batteries to off-gas carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, hydrogen, and other volatile organic compounds, which can be toxic to anyone who might come in contact with them. Further, as these gases are volatile, they can still catch fire if sparked by excess of heat or lightning. There will be thousands of batteries on the site, an unknown quantity of batteries that could off-gas at any time. Therefore, the company cannot claim to have no harmful emissions. As of yet, there have been no long-term studies done on the effects these emissions will have on the environment and humans. Until a long-term study is done, one cannot say with certainty that the everyday operational best system has no harmful effects on the environment. It is therefore irresponsible and reckless on the part of the company to complain, excuse me, to claim there are no harmful emissions coming from the batteries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Say not to fuss over that, sorry. Good evening. My name is Carrie Reardon.
Just speaking. Kevin, you want to help her out? Just move. You got it?
Sorry. Am I good? I don't know. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. So, good evening. My name is Carrie. Okay. Third time's a charm, sorry. Little nervous. So, good evening. My name is Carrie. I am a MAIPAC resident. I have an address of confidentiality. May I approach?
Yeah, you can bring it to, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So. It's me again. It's me again. Fortunately, or unfortunately, I guess it all depends on who you ask and who is responding and listening or laughing. And it's okay if you laugh. I will try to make this quick. I would like to thank the board for finally having decorum in the last meeting. I guess the third time is a charm. I won't be handing out or reading carrot cake recipes this go-around, but I am hopeful that I will actually have my voice heard. And I'd like to discuss several things and make some suggestions. Clearly, again, I am nervous, so please bear with me. I will address the board and the board only. And before I begin, I respectfully ask that I have a chance to speak, be listened to, not berated or argued with or interrupted or censored. I would also like to have a rule in place now and effective immediately and in the future meetings that we the people, the community, are not addressed by non-board members baited, debated, or berated. When residents address us, we the people, the community, that opens the floor for lack of decorum and puts all of us in a position to defend ourselves and respond to a situation that we are being put into. Now, speaking of rules, in my humble opinion, the rules are not made clear, stated, or available in person or online. And without rules or regulations, again, that leads to no decorum. Additionally, when the rules apply to some and not to others, one, it's confusing. Two, it can be deemed as favoritism. Three, when the rules apply to some and not others, I call that cherry-picking to suit the narrative. And as I said, it's confusing. It causes chaos. And again, that word, lack of decorum. And there, and there appears to be an unspoken set of rules that seem to change at any given moment, again, to suit the narrative. Through much persistence and research and emails and foils, I have finally learned that the rules are supposed to be Robert's Rules of Orders, newly revised, 12th edition, as this is the most current official handbook used by the boards. I would like to propose that this book be available for all in PDF form or as a resource here at Town Hall for all to have access to this book. The book starts at $24.99 and upward, and this should not be a secret. These rules should not be a secret. And we the people should not have to incur this fee. Additionally, I would like to suggest having a brief guide or cheat sheet, if you will, on our town website as we cannot and should not assume the rules. I am willing to work with you all to achieve this as I know having 700 pages available online isn't reasonable. But creating a brief synopsis and combines with having it on hand and access to the book or PDF here at Town Hall or even at our library would be beneficial. I have a list of infractions and concerns that I would like to address, and I will submit these that I'd like to see cleaned up and not, not just a yes, yes us to death appease. And in no particular order, one, violating our First Amendment rights is unconstitutional. So is violating our civil rights and censorship. Abuse of authority and power, corruption, board members insulting the public, berating, and lacking decorum. Lack of truth, transparency, and integrity. This board has sat on plans for four years. That is since 2020, 2020. The master plan. Why hasn't it been completed? What is the deadline? I have to say this, and this is my opinion. I do not represent anybody else's thoughts or opinion. But had we had the master plan been, had the master plan been completed, we the people would not be in this situation. Hiring a Spanish-speaking bilingual person, board member, councilman to assist the taxpaying members of the community, Spanish-speaking community, so they have equal access to resources, meetings, translation, without being discriminated against. I can also help with this. Making available making available for all at town's expense, Robert's Rules of Order, new revised, 12th edition or most current edition available, both in English and Spanish, and the updated and replaced, updated and replaced regularly as new versions come into existence. Forbidding residents to address public, the public, community residents, unless otherwise noted according to Robert's rule, which will be made available having decorum and redirecting questions from guests, community members, residents, et cetera, to address the board exclusively. Comprehensive plan, public notice changes as previously asked and not acknowledged. I also have something for another resident that has asked me to put on the record. I will state his name.
Okay, five minutes. We passed it two minutes ago.
Okay, can I? I, I've not ever had an opportunity to speak. I just am raised back.
You've been up here many times, ma'am.
We're not doing it. Please let me speak. And I, let me speak. You're not going to tell me no because it's against my constitutional right. I respect the five minutes. You have never given me the five minutes.
This is, this is what decorum means.
Comprehensive plan, public notice changes.
You're the one that is breaking decorum.
Acknowledge. Codes revised.
Don't make me ask the cop to make me, come on.
Codes revised. If you have me detained or removed, I will, I'm not, listen. So my son is here. I have his five minutes. And I have, and I have other members who have given me their minutes. I also have Mike Novak.
The whole reason why these meetings turn into this lack of decorum is this. Please, your five minutes.
Dr. Reardon, how much longer do you need?
I need a few minutes, please.
If we give you one minute, is that good?
No, because I have a couple of things that are important that need to be addressed. And I also have Mike Novak. And this is, this is actually important to my safety and my family's safety.
Next meeting, you can bring it up.
I'm sorry?
Next meeting, you can bring that up.
I wasn't, no, I can't because I wasn't safe here.
Please be respectful.
I wasn't safe.
Please be respectful.
I understand that, but I wasn't safe here.
Okay, this is, your lack of decorum is, this is the definition. Every time you get up and speak, this is the definition of lack of decorum. Please be nice.
You are violating my rights.
No, I'm not, ma'am.
Yes, you are. And my attorney advised me on that.
That's very nice.
So please just allow me to get through.
Please don't make this a circus again. Please sit down.
Okay, so I have one minute, and I'm going to say it.
Everyone gets five minutes, and you went over the five minutes because then if you continue with five, I'm sorry. We have to keep on going.
We've had people who spoke here for 20 minutes about trees. I, I just need to get through this, and I will go away, and I won't come back.
Ma'am, five minutes is five minutes. Okay, because then every single person out, as you just said before, we're doing five minutes. You were saying before, we can't treat different people different ways. Everyone gets five minutes. So I'm asking the board to please five minutes, and I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'm going to step down. I would like for the record, and I am coming back to discuss how you put me and my family in jeopardy, and you sent somebody out to follow me out and put me in danger as a victim of domestic violence.
So I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session.
Please stop.
The crowd is leaving. I'm going to make a motion. I have a motion.
Okay.
I have a motion to go into executive session. I have a second.
The, I'm leaving. The fact that you edited a public video.
Good night, everybody.